You have logged in? Does you have Sean logged in yet, or? Okay, roll call.
Here.
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 Chair Kidd, here. Commissioner Ospey.
Here.
Commissioner Basford.
Here.
Then I'd like a motion for an excused absence for Mr. Dressler.
I'll make a motion to excuse him for Mr.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Will?
Uh, yea. Hi. I didn't know.
We wanted you included here. Let's stand for the.
I did. New guy.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Moved.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are there any conflict of interests? See none, so correspondence? No correspondence. Introductions, we have Mayor Jernigan here. And just the lady. Okay Jenny, I'm sorry. Jenny from the newspaper. Okay. Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Also, I want to introduce Sean Goodman, some past council members also called in, so he's on video. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendments to California Government Code, section five four nine five zero prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Don't see any public appearance. So we'll move on to approve the minutes of April nineteenth. If I could have a motion for that. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to just draw the commission's attention to one item, a technicality. And it's not going to change anything, it won't change both, but the minutes that were attached to the meeting on page two. Providing Chair Wright called for a motion when Chair Kidd moved, and I would just draw attention to that and just mention that the record speaks for itself. They are, the minutes are, the meeting minutes are posted on the internet for your review, if you want to see what the problem is.
Okay, thank you. So I'd ask for an approval with that amendment?
Well, I can't amend, I don't want to amend. Um, I'm.
You're just noting.
That there was technically no motion called for by the chair.
Okay.
When, when Chair Kidd made the motion, but it won't change anything because the vote's still going to be the same. There's no type, well, you're saying that there is a motion was called for by the chair and there wasn't. He had not asked for.
And that's a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
So, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know, identifying that might change something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve with that correction?
I'll make a motion to approve with that correction.
Second.
I'll second that.
I will, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hope's staying.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, public nuisance ordinance code enforcement case update on properties that have been identified as a public nuisance, and we have a list of those.
No, it's just, it's just.
It's just informational.
Yeah, so Commissioner Ospey requested that, you know, an update for the receivership properties that have gone to the attorney be placed on the agenda, so we wanted to provide you all with the forty-six cases of the forty-six cases. Thirty-three of them are now closed. As you know, the city council has made it a priority for us to clean up the city, and we've been able to do it through the city attorney, either with an abatement or with the receiver abatement is where the court appoints a abatement warrant, where the city can then hire somebody to go onto the property. And the second case, ESPNP will appoint, the court will have appoint a receiver at the San Marino County Courts. And so those are the two mechanisms the city's been able to be successful in beautifying the city in doing so. This is just a member in them of where we're at with all the receivership properties.
Go ahead, Bob.
Patrick, uh, just for curiosity, how do you become a receiver?
So you've got to go, you gotta get appointed through the court, and so I'm not an attorney, but basically you've got to have a track record in working with the law firm that does receiverships. So we, our attorney hires a receiver who's basically an attorney that has the background with the construction expertise. And so go find yourself an attorney.
Not for me.
No, I know, but yeah, go find yourself an attorney and then have the contractor background. And if you want more information, I can have our attorney show that.
Well, it's not just a third part, or innocent third party, or like what I'm.
No, it's very challenging, you've got to have, you've got to be bonded, and it's a, it's a long, it's a thorough process for the court that you, so just having a contractor's license won't do it. It's a thorough process, so I can get that information for you all.
It was just curiosity, I said. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you very much for getting, I think this was a great format, along with what you supplied for the cannabis, and I'd, I'd just like to say if, you know, not every meeting, even though our meetings are, you know, separated more, but that's exactly what I asked for, and you know, because I didn't, you know, we didn't need Adrian to, you know, give a presentation, but it just, every two or three meetings or something, I'd, I'd love to have both of these. I think it really keeps us, I mean, this, every time I see it, it just kind of blows me away. It's more than I remember.
Well, it keeps us updated on what we're doing along the way, too, you know? I think like the short-term rentals, maybe at some point to include that too, because I'm curious.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Was curious on how that's going, but yeah, really good report, thank you. Any other questions on that?
Oh, great job.
Yeah, it was, did a great job. Okay, number three, recommending to the city council approval of the Development Services Department proposed budget planning, building code enforcement and engineering for a fiscal year ending six thirty twenty-four.
And, um, let me set the stage, the, um, at least you have some. The overall very preliminary budget is we expect revenues of about eleven million, six hundred thousand. With expenditures of eleven million, eleven thousand, so five hundred thousand. Now, projecting revenues is a scientific, but more art than science, honestly. We take a very conservative approach in the sense that we tend to use last year's numbers with some addition. But this year presents a challenge because every economist I've heard speak live on the news, wherever, is saying we will have a recession. Uh, we don't know when it will begin, we don't know how long it will last, we don't know how deep it will be. So we have focused on trying to control expenditures and it and hopefully build some additional reserves in the event that the economic forecasters are correct. Some argue that we're in it already, but basically looking at expenditures in, for consumer goods, I'm not seeing it yet. So generally, the, um, this is, we're seeing a drop in cannabis revenue. We are forecasting a drop of about four hundred thousand dollars overall between, spread between the dispensaries and the cultivation, or the cultivators. They are reporting that there was a glut on the market over the last ten, twelve months, and they're not able to get the prices. The Cannabis Bureau at State California confirms that. I'm not purchaser, so I couldn't tell you myself, but, um, we are taking an ultra-conservative approach there. And right now they're off about twenty percent so far this year, but we're looking at another probably ten percent drop. Now, the benefit of being conservative is if it doesn't drop that much, that becomes funds, but they'll, you don't want to be in the other position where you overforecast revenues, and that's just the, the approach we've taken. The, uh, we have received, they met with all of the departments, and we have their requests. There are, there's one halftime decision being added in parks because the the retiree who's been taking care of the swimming pool over here has said, I can't do it anymore. I'm don't have the energy. He's been retired to begin with, but he is, uh, he's, he's taking his fun.
Can any of the parks grant money that you got cover that?
Uh, no, because they're all capital.
Okay.
Grants, so it, it doesn't really help. But the good news is that we are undertaking approximately thirty million dollars in capital projects. That's the good news. The bad news is all of those grants are, we spend the money, submit the bills, and wait for Caltrans, Parks, or State Department of Parks, Euro Reclamation, all those people to reverse us, so we have a, a cash flow limitation on how fast we can roll these projects out, because my working capital, the, we don't have a deep reserve, although our goal is fifteen percent. I think this last year we were at ten. And this year we're probably looking at about between eight and ten. But we're continuing to be conservative. We well, that, that kind of sets the overall, it's the overall context, is that we are trying to avoid being put in a position of layoffs. And those kind of cutbacks, which previous counselors had to deal with, and those were tough and difficult decisions. But it's, it's kind of continuing on. Uh, the grants that we receive for the planning work are used up and the projects are complete. But we are, and Patrick will announce a grant that we're receiving for housing later on in the meeting. So, but those are, those are typically for specific projects and not put into the operating.
Is there, is there any talk about how to increase the reserve?
Well, it's, yeah, the, the practice has got to be, if you're budgeting for five thousand dollars of office supplies, try and get by with thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
You know, it is a, it is a day-to-day, month-by-month, now, we're not counting April, so I don't want to leave you with that impression other than we're being, we have to exercise legality at every opportunity. And, you know, we're not a big spending decision. So it's ingrained in the culture already, and there are many that remember twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, actually the whole period after two thousand eight crash, when things were very difficult, so. We do have money for some wonderful projects. We are going to have groundbreaking on twenty-fourth, and I'll send you a notice on that of this month for the water treatment plant. We were able to take well fifteen out of service last month because we had well eleven ready to go, so we now have two wells of twenty-two hundred gallons a minute, which can supply, either one can supply the city with all of its needs. Now, this first time in two years within. So, and that, that, and we're starting the, the water treatment plant. But the seven and a half million dollars of park improvements, little bits and pieces of it have been done, all playground equipment is there. The field lights on the other, the second field at Millsville Field has been completed. School district renovation of Nikki Bunch, I guess it's that way, has been completed. And it is getting rave reviews from everybody who comes here to play about their envy, I guess would be the right word, of. And our girls are, they got to be odds-on favored to win. They've, they've won their last seven, they've won nineteen in a row. Last seven games were by the mercy.
They're good.
By the mercy rule, which means if you're ahead by ten at the end of two innings, it's game's over. If you're ahead by fifteen at the end of three, it's over. So they, they haven't played a full game in months. So, uh, they've done it again, but anyway, what that points out is, we get money, we're getting money for capital. But then there's no money for operations. And let me give you an example. The pool, um, wonderful to have the pool, it was a grant that built it. But we take in about twenty thousand dollars a year in pool fees, it costs about a hundred and eighty dollars. So even though you get a gift of the pool, that's not worth costing us. So we're trying to adjust all that. Public safety is going up about four hundred thousand dollars. No additional officers, that's just the, the cost of liability insurance. So many wrecked cars, addition, uh, A increases. The, the cost of equipment, you know, the seven percent inflation last year didn't help us. But we're in, we're in fair condition. And the goodness is, we, we get in a lot of trouble.
You're still allocating for streets.
Yes, yes. Uh, the councils continued, um, the dedication of the cannabis money for street program. We're getting ready to put out the bid this month for the next tranche of those street repairs, which finish off all the stuff down by Broadway and gets the first streets up on the vistas done, and we'll walk our way across there. And then we'll be down in the Walnut, Chestnut area.
And that's, you know, that's my concern too, and that which we don't have control over here, but like you're saying, a gift is a double-edged sword, because all this park money is wonderful, but then we're left to maintain it all. So that's going to have to increase the park budget to maintain it, I would think.
And, and Chair. And so what we've done is we are trying to, as we design the improvements, look at the minimal, minimize ongoing costs. For example, say this prison quality, uh, fixtures, bathroom fixtures in the park at Duke Watkins, because those are stainless steel that are, that are hard to dent, but we just got tired of fixing the, the porcelain.
Yeah.
They're more expensive. On, on the utility side, an example is we are moving to LED lights, which the difference is seventy cents an hour for typical sodium vapor lights, seven cents an hour for LED. The LED are about twice the cost for the, the home.
nicer lighting, too.
We're, we're, yeah, it's much better, but we are, we're looking at what we construct being easy to maintain. If that makes sense. So we're, we're in good shape.
Ask that question?
Sure.
Um, just out of curiosity, on the three hundred eight thousand number cannabis business, you said they said that there's a glut on the market. Do you think the cartels could have anything to do with that? People that are usually paid for it are now getting it elsewhere?
I, I think the, the biggest threat to the legal regulated licensed facilities are the illegal operation. And, you know, there's anecdote after anecdote of up in Humboldt County in that area. There's green triangles that are referred to, then farming illegally on forest service lanes. Well, they're, they're catching up with them.
That, that.
But it's a whack-a-mole game. And, and the sheriff, that's putting a big effort towards illegal operations out in the desert. They will go out on your property or your property, and they'll set up hoop houses and start throwing, and they get busted, and they're Chinese and Mexican cartels, and they bust them and arrest everybody, and.
They're out the next day.
They're out the next day, and.
They set up another one.
And they set up another one. So it's, it's a whack-a-mole game, but it, it is, uh, it is undercutting the price, it undercut the price. It also, like a lot of what I'll call new products, there's, everybody thinks they're going to be great soon. Send to the next thing, you know, you got a glut of supply, and then the market evens out. We think that that evening out is will happen this year, and then everything will be sustained because lenders aren't interested in lending on a down mark. Now, we're starting to see some projects which had been delayed, reactivated. For example, the, um, Mr. McDaniel's nursery proved, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
Well, and they are now back meeting with Patrick about permits. I mean, entitlements are all done, but construction.
Was their time up?
Uh, yeah, they, they, yeah, yes, yes. So we're starting to see, uh, a lot of activity. Not a lot, but some, some indication.
Is that happening on other building projects too, like they're, they're using their time to permit before they start building, or they want to renew the permits, or if any of those fall is true?
Here the in the, on the cannabis side, uh, every every developer, would-be developer in the world wanted to get permits for cannabis. It was just, they overshot, and there, there's too many. We could probably serve half the state out of what's been permitted. But that's, that's not really healthy. But there are a lot of people that have found themselves holding permits that they can't get funding for, for permits that are ready for construction, they can't get construction loans. So, but we are seeing a lot of interest in the, the travel industry. Obviously, the Hampton Inn, when it opened, it's been essentially at a hundred percent. Yeah, well, which is great, because their price point was significantly above, um, the other outside entrance hotels. So we've had a couple of hotel developers express interest about building another Hampton-like, that including the current owner, the current owner of the Hampton Inn, who owns the two by McDonald's, they, um, he's already in, and he's about to get permits any day now for adding eighteen rooms to that hotel. So he has eighty-two now, plus they add eighteen to it. And he also has, in early stages of discussion, about adding a, an extended stay hotel on the property on Broadway where the tunnel, the white tunnel under California. He purchased that, which used to be an old gas station convenience market, I understand. He's purchased that and has plans to put an extended stay hotel there.
That'd be great.
In all reality, probably a couple of years. But he is, he is very bullish on, on the needle so tell market. But we have people to come in all the time.
How about the, the permit on Broadway? Like, was going to do the two-story assisted, or living and.
Oh, sure. The Route sixty-six destinations. They finally got a tag. That was the square block where the former.
Yeah.
Uh, Chamber of Commerce building is. We sold that two years ago.
Yeah.
The developer had a bunch of deadlines to meet.
Right.
But they didn't. Uh, the council gave them an extension because of primarily COVID, it was the twenty. They again failed to meet. And we've recently had discussions about, we have the opportunity to buy it back for seventy percent of the price that it was sold.
They just came in and made that big presentation to city council with all the, how long they failed when council extended after that meeting? Failed again?
And they've, they've had the property for three years. Now, it's, hasn't been the best development environment, but the council hasn't decided what to do yet, but they, there, there's an opportunity to buy it back for seventy percent of the cost. Now, land prices have gone up, so it's worth theoretically more if you have a buyer.
Yeah.
But if you don't, and I'm disappointed because I thought it was a beautiful development. So there's, there's some challenges there. Any other questions about general before Patrick begins to speak? Because what I've asked Patrick to do is to summarize, basically, we'll keep doing this, but we'll keep issuing permits, we'll keep all that. But then there are some new things that, that he's, that we're going to be doing, and I want to focus on.
Well, you, and here. Yeah, you have a question?
You were talking, we started this with the budget, right? And you didn't get into your final closing remarks yet, right? I had a question for you that I'll wait on.
Yeah, of course, and like the.
Yeah. You want me to do it now, or?
Either way, whatever, the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Small question. Based on our decision to approve the RV park, have you had a chance to make any progress at all on starting the BNSF road? It's only a couple of weeks ago, but, or a few weeks.
Yes. We personally, the same contract that Phillips excavation is doing the underpass. And we've had it in contract for three years. Finally, the final, final, I'm told, is all done. And then he is just waiting, the contractor, to get their three insurance certificates that BNSF requires of anybody working in there right away, terms of liability insurance and, yeah, yeah, yeah. I am told that that will begin construction before the end of the month. There's no, the council's already proven they did it. It's set, it's just meeting all of the requirements of BNSF. It's just meeting all of the requirements of BNSF. Um, he is the contractor excavator, the Phillips excavation. Uh, we are doing going in and adding six to nine inches of asphalt tailings or brandings off the freeway and off of our street projects. And we're putting those down, uh, compacting them and putting a story seal.
This is a BNS, the BNSF road you're talking.
Yes, yes, the one that parallels the roadway, K Street to their their nature. So that, I believe that, and and we're supposed to have a proposal from a Phillips excavation before the end of the week.
Well, then that brings me up a comment more than anything because I certainly don't build roads. But I was looking the other day on the Dyke Road that everyone's concerned because it's narrow. Is there any possibility that could become a one-way? And then you'd have a circle?
Um.
Because we know that it's not going to be feasible to rebuild that road, probably.
We we're we're probably looking at two and a half million to. Just.
But that might be a an immediate, an immediate fix of the problem with the boats and getting in there. Passing on it because you still have a couple of outlets you can.
Spend time with the with the traffic engineer because it it's, it's really that part along the golf course where it's seen as the narrowest. Um, but we want to, while I was out checking out BNSF road, then I drove what is River Street, I think. Back up, connect back into, um, River Road. And it's, it's even worse.
Yeah.
And anybody who has a little eager.
Have proven that, yeah.
Well, Rick, if maybe I could ask a question too. You may maybe remember we discussed the road a little bit too. I'm no engineer, but you know, I take that road quite often to go launch my boat. And I was just kind of, you know, making some observations. And I think I asked you the last time whether the dyke, it actually serves a purpose or not as a dyke. The reason being, if it didn't serve a purposes as a dyke, because obviously it's tapered as you go down and it gets wider as you go down. I just wondered, would it be possible to shave that section that goes across the golf courts down by two or three feet? Because as you go lower, you gain width. You could, that road I was looking at, it could easily be widened by two to four feet or more. If just if it was lowered just a little bit. And if it was widened and repaved, it would, it seems like it would solve the problem because the other sections, there's room enough. It's only the section across the golf course where you've got that issue. Well, you know, you, it's, it can't be widened unless it's lowered or something.
Such a about what could be achieved there. And the purpose of the diet.
Okay, well, maybe with that, we should, we should probably get back to our budget. So.
See, I don't know, we're fine. So our, so our recommendation is to adopt the budget for the Development Services Planning Building enforcement engineering for the fiscal year twenty-four. So that's what we're recommending. You've seen this list, you read it over, I just want to, we're going over a couple of the highlights, interest of time. So, um, basically, the city manager questions some highlights and then some things that we're working on in the future. Some of the highlights and Rick's already talked about some of these, the Hampton Inn, they've they've opened up last November, so that's fantastic. The Tesla charging stations, Rick, the mayor and I attended a conference last week at Skag and all they could talk about was Tesla and charging stations. And it was nice for us to raise our hand and say, well, we've got thirty-two of those. And none of that, none of that was our money, all private money, which is huge. Uh, it's not what the conversation was, they're talking about public-private partnerships. And it was nice to say we didn't have to do that. So we're up fifty-four permits in the building department year over year, so that's great. People are building and we all committed an online, uh, permitting process. You can go onto the website and get your building permit. It goes, sends a link over to the building department, they take a look at it, we get back to you with the analysis. You can't pay for it online, but you can get it and fill it out and do that whole part. We're, that's the next step. Uh, we've got cannabis, uh, projects and our development, one hundred and sixty-three thousand that are coming online, so it's exciting. And then the, as Rick pointed out, the Hampton is doing an eighteen-room expansion. One of the biggest changes is that we've got a new building code, the twenty-twenty-two California Building Code. We're working with guiding our contractors and builders through the process. Our job is to hold their hands and ensure that they understand what the process is, what does the building code mean? And we help guide you through it. Um, and and I also provided you with the permit log. Uh, you'll get one every month, April's already done, Elena just emailed it to me, so I'll get you that in the email, uh, tomorrow morning. But you'll have a permit log. As you can see though, we expedite our permits, um, you know, same day in most of these cases, the commercial projects, those take a little bit more time, we have to send them out, but still there's a contractual obligation for them to get back to us within four, twelve to fourteen days. And so that's really exciting. Code enforcement, we participated in some multi-agency raids, uh, we inspect thirty-one of the cannabis buildings. So basically, we provided you with the list of the cannabis facilities. It's growing, continue, no pun intended, but it continues to grow, which is exciting, it means more revenue. As as Mr. Daniels pointed out, revenue is going down, so the more that we bring on, ideally, there'll be more in volume. So that's a good thing for us. Um, and then, um, we continue to work with the building office to implement the short-term rental program. Some of the goals is, you know, assist cannabis businesses coming online. We anticipate six facilities, cultivation facilities coming online this fiscal year. So the Stizzy projects are going to be coming online. The one down on Broadway, the, uh, one across the street from the nursery, the old antique shop. That one's pretty much, uh, it's, they've got the plumbing in, so that one's, they're hot and heavy, they're moving forward. Um, and then engineering, Mr. Daniels pointed out, we've got twenty-seven million dollars with the projects that are currently under construction and, uh, moving forward. The Needles Bridge Rehabilitation, we got that completed last week or the week before. So, um, you know, and we are going to fix the dip, there is a little bit of a dip. Mr. Daniels ensured that we would, uh, that Caltrans and D O A dot will be fixing that dip. So you don't worry about that. Well, the, um, installation of the, uh, advanced metering for the, uh, electrical utility has gone in the skate park. And then phase three of the pavement management, you know, as Mr. Daniels pointed out, the water treatment plant facility is going to be having a groundbreaking. May twenty-fourth, we'll get you that information, the K Street Underpass will be opening. And, uh, the rehabilitation of the Duke Wax and and Jack Smith Park are some of the goals that we've got for engineering. And then lastly, the planning, uh, Mr. Daniels and I will be driving down to Riverside tomorrow to receive the city's. Why, I'd bet money on it, I'm not sure, a hundred percent sure, but I believe this is the city's first, uh, American Planning Association Award. We got an EPA award for our general plan, land use, uh, transportation. So we won the inland empire section and we've been pushed to the state. And so we're in contention for the state EPA award, which is really exciting. Um, it it's icing on the cake that, as Rick pointed out, that, um, it was all paid for through grants and a majority of like ninety-nine percent of it. So that's what we, and then we were also designated pro housing designation. Uh, there's a gag order on it, so just, we've got a little bit of a grant coming our way, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in terms of monies that we can put towards, um, first-time mortgage loans for people if they need to go, uh, first-time home buyers. We got two hundred and twenty-five thousand earmarked for for loans towards people that are coming to Needles that need a first-time home buyer loan. We got two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked for that, um, that is paid for by the state of California, HCD. So that's really exciting. We got a, um, in addition to that, uh, the remaining, we've got, uh, we are going to join the county housing trust fund. So we've got five years worth of membership into that, uh, with the the monies that we'd earmarked for that. And then we did a developer subsidy for workforce housing, so we got a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars towards that to to put towards workforce housing. So when a developer comes.
Ship into the, into the, uh.
So the county is putting together a housing trust. And so basically, they're going to put dollars towards attracting developers to the cities that do put into that housing trust. Uh, and so we're, we've identified the city council has, uh, put a letter of intent forward. There is a membership fee. And so we thought it'd be smart to put that into this grant paid for by the state to participate for the first five years. So none of that money is coming out of our pockets. We've got five years to figure out if we like this or not. And if it's not working for us after those five years, we can just walk away.
So are the, are, are there certain requirements you have to meet to be in there? What type of housing, do they dictate what type of housing?
No, you've got to be in the city of the, you've got to be in San Bernardino County, a summer one, and then two, you got to pay the membership fee. And then after that, they're going to be, it's affordable housing, it's workforce housing. It's, it's not marked, I mean, you know, a portion of it can be market rate housing. But it's going to be, uh, uh, house, affordable housing developers along with market rate housing developers to come together. It's going to put us on the microscope and show that we are even more pro housing than the designation shows. And so it gives us access.
It's going to be low income.
Oh, no, I mean, what's low income? The city of Needles, medium income, forty-two thousand.
Choice, yeah, but you have a choice of what kind of development comes in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's just, um, it's just a, it's a connection, it's a social networking opportunity to put us with other developers and figure out. But as you can remember, we need moderate housing, that's what our housing element states, not the low and the very low. We've already got those covered. What we need is the moderate. And actually, I had a, we had a phone call today with the developer. Um, we met, uh, with the mayor and, uh, and Rick and I went to the homeless summit last week in San Bernardino County. Gave him my card on the way out, I said, we need housing. He called me and basically they do deals in Blithe and San Bernardino County, but he was surprised to see our housing element that we need the upper levels. And so he goes, that's not very, that's not very, he was happy.
Yeah.
You know, uh, he was happy to see that. And so he 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 just said that wasn't normal. So, uh, moving on to, so basically, uh, we've avoided this builder's remedy and retained our zoning authority, which is huge with the passage of our housing element. Yes, it's a, it's a planning document that the state has really cracked down on, uh, on this, having this housing element. And then for the first time in thirty-six years, we did our land use and circulation element, which we got, uh, an award for. We've got seventy-five, um, lot RV park coming online, which is fantastic. And we also had a sixty lot tentative track map get approved, uh, for, so there's some big projects. We haven't done a tentative track map in quite some time, yet alone an RV park. You know, it's very exciting. And then we're going to continue to bring our grand, uh, general plan into, um, compliance. Basically, there's various elements, we did land use, we did housing, we did transportation. And so, uh, we need to bring in, um, the rest of them. And so we're going to go achieve grants to go get those so that we, uh, we are compliant with our general plan. And, um, you know, our goal is to attract more housing. So with that, we recommend that you approve this, uh, the city manager's budget for, uh, to the city council for the Development Services Department for planning, building code and engineering for fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for?
One, one, just a generalized question on the expenditure section, not the revenue section. So it looks to me, for the most part, this is all increased minimum wages and more employees retired, right? It's basically what this, this all says, pay increases for contract and associated PR costs. I can't see it with my eye glass.
Andrew.
Oh, that's okay, I'd rather read blind, I'll let you fill in the blank.
All right. Uh, the city did a position or a pain classification study, um, years. And it, we found that in most of the positions, that we were seriously, uh, under even the median of other communities. So the the council granted a change in some people's, uh, wages. Primarily, they focused on the bottom where those that were at minimum wage, but working full-time, that they they bunked those up from fifteen to about nineteen and twenty dollars an hour. The top didn't get as much, uh, but we're in the third year, so they spread those cost increases out of the third year. So this is the last of the three-year salary increases that that happened. And it's allowed us to be competitive in the marketplace.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I guess we need a motion to approve.
Making my.
Not on the, uh, of Patrick, I guess immediately, all right, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous, thank you.
Um, Andrew, may I? I know you've you've already acted on it, but one of the things that's worthy of note is there is something like nine hundred thousand to one point two million outstanding code violation fines and penalties.
Actually, I was going to ask you that on the board request, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're in our little city?
Well, um, yeah, well, we we.
Are some of them cannabis?
No, they are. Um, the two hotels.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, have extensive, well, they had, they've accumulated extensive fines, fees, late penalties, uh, attorney's costs, uh, staff costs. Um, and, uh, we are subject to the per se to afford on how much of that we get. Um, but I one of them's in receivership and I think one has been purchased in lieu of receivership. Um, but there is considerable amount of fines that are out there that we didn't budget them as revenue because it's not the site. And on many of the leads, usually tax leads that we do, often we don't get paid for two to five, six, seven years late. It's when the property change seems that we get cleared. So there is a lot of, of.
Okay, well, we'll move on to board requests, Michael.
I have nothing.
None, Barbara?
I only had the one and he answered it.
And we got that taken care of, okay, Bob.
Yeah, I only was concerned about the dip and he answered that one.
Sometimes we run out there with string.
Yeah, it's minor, but you you notice it, yeah.
I do have a few things. Um, I noticed that the the small motel right at the bottom of the the overpass on the right, it was going to, years ago, we had, um, it was going to be an assisted living. I forget the name. But I've noticed just recently there, there's landscaping, they painted. So I was just wondering the status on that.
Well, as you, as you know, and I think I'm sure it's a few, we had, the city has assumed responsibility for the housing for we're in the final stages of incorporating them into our structure. But there is a program called BASH. Is that it?
Yeah.
Be a with veterans assisted housing. And we are working with that without the owner that wants to convert that into a veterans' single-room occupancy and knock down some laws and maybe make two. So it's aimed at veterans. So what we would do is he would give us the plans, we would work it, we would then apply to the state for funding. And then that if we're successful, then they would, uh, provide the funding and us then to the developer to build that out as a veterans. Uh, the other conversion that we're looking at has been discussed with us is the Imperial Motel, which is by, was it Cubs Liquor? It might not be right, right name.
Old Rod's Liquor.
What's that?
Old Rod's Liquor.
Could be, um.
It had a fire one time, I think.
Yes. That they were really weren't functioning as a motel. It was a, it was a single-room occupancy situation. So, uh, they're in for, um, so they're trying to put together their project that would qualify for veterans or senior project there.
That's fabulous, that's needed.
So it would be apartments, long-term as opposed to short-term?
Well, you know, we're, that's where we've gotten cracked enough in this thing. where we're gonna crack the nut in this thing is we not many go contract. We've got to. Because if you're earning between forty and fifty thousand, which means the low-income definition. You can't afford, um, a large home. So it's either apartments or duplex, something like that. And then you, and then you're in a rental situation. So Patrick's been working with the property which has sixty lots, Strong birth?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. So up by the, um, rodeo grounds. As you're going up the hill on Clarice, it's on the right.
Yeah.
That one is fully approved. And the develop, the owner had been trying to sell it for a couple decades now. And he's finally gone, well, I'm gonna do it myself. So, um, we are working with him and our financial advisor. Uh, we're gonna have to create a benefit assessment district, a melon roos kind of district to provide the funding to put in all the onsite infrastructure. And, and then he, but he has, I think, fourteen lots along there that he can start building.
Then their apartment building.
No, he, he's, he's looking at a single-family slash duplex. So single-family with a mother, an accessory dwelling unit or joined two units, uh, in there. So, um, we're very optimistic. And we've got our financial advisor working on um, the funding assessments that would need to be done. And he's working on engineering costs about what needs to be done. And then our financial advisor is looking at how we would share those costs to all those fifty-seven property units to get that infrastructure.
Any other?
Two, two more things. Um, quite a while ago, this study was done on Needles Highway for bringing in utilities or in water. And I know it was multi-millions. And I just wondered, and I think at the talk at the time was waiting for a big developer on some of the be larger projects. And I just wondered if you'd heard anything or if there's anything in the works on that.
Well, we, we hear some talk about the property beyond Palm River Resort. The old Barella property, I think.
Right.
Okay. But nothing nothing materializes. And we're gonna need a big developer in order to put in place what's called an enhanced infrastructure financing district. It's a, it's a melon roots. But at a community level scale, uh, and then, uh, that would, and I think the cost of forty-five million to put in wa, just water and soup.
Yeah. Okay, one more thing. Um, it was my understanding, and I know it was a long time ago, we went through this when we were doing the metal buildings and things. But it was my understanding at that time, so I may be asking for clarification, that, um, storage, um, containers were not allowed for private person belongings on the site. Is that true? Because if it is, I do have a complaint. There's one, Ben, one, a large one out there where I walk all the time for years.
Well, there's a couple of those that we went through and they were, they were supposed to be removed. Enforcement was, and I don't, again, that's why it's important for us to follow up on this stuff because we don't know.
I might have a little input on that. When I first moved into town here, um, I was here about a year and I had some really bad flooding in my house. They had to tear all the drywall off. So I rented a storage uh, container. And I looked it up and in the code, it said that you could have one on your property as long as the color was, you know, kind of in conformance with the surroundings. I just opt. And eventually I opted, you know, I got my place fixed, but I opted to get rid of it and put up a proper building for a garage. But I thought that I saw that it was allowed.
If you have to have a, would you have to have a house?
It could use it as an accessory.
Accessory.
To the house. And so say if you had the house and you wanted to put it adjacent to the house, it could be, it, it could be an a, uh, an accessory use. But it can't be a standalone use. What, what had happened was the city itself, we're trying to sort it out ourselves because we've got those as well and we use those currently. And so we, we might need to revisit that code, um, to see how we can benefit, you know, um, you know, the the city and, and not the city, but how, how those that, maybe we need to rethink how we're doing it. Cause like we rethought metal buildings and the, you know, and the, and so maybe we just need to bring that back so you can look at the code. Take a look at it and see if y'all wanna do anything with it. Cause you know, we've got, we're using some in certain cases and, and we need them because it, it is more affordable than.
Well, and if it's short-term, or like you say, if it's with a dwelling and then they paint it and it fits in.
And it needs to be, it needs to be colored. There's certain, let me bring the code back so y'all can see it. I'll do that.
Well, see, I guess then I was right on part of it because, but what you're saying, we have issues. Because the city obviously isn't gonna have a house there, but they have them. But I know that there was code enforcement on some because I remember it at meetings. But I also, I mean, because I'm fine with the structure, I mean, that we can discuss that. But I've seen some fabulous homes that have been built out of storage containers. Of course, the whole facade covering, you can't tell. But I would like to revisit, not, not for me, because I don't even weld. So it wouldn't, but I have, I would hate to just stifle it for someone like, say, Phillips and stuff. Man, they have, they could do some of these wonderful homes. So if it's a possibility, I, I think it should be allowed in our code if it's done right. That's my only thought.
We actually have a, a home by a shipping container being turned into a home. Yeah, up to the gates.
Oh, okay. Well, good.
But it's, it's, it's candidly, it's interesting to watch.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's not gonna look like it should.
No.
Right.
I, I just, I didn't think it was allowed because of, so that's wonderful. I've, I've learned. That, that's great then. Okay.
A lot of them, um, I think Colorado has a lot in the mountains.
Right.
Too. They're incredible designs. But, you know, they're extremely costly too. Very costly when you get into that kind of design. We're, I think we just tried to get rid of the crummy-looking container.
It's just sitting in desert nor out by the radio station or, you know, whatever. And they, they weren't, didn't serve a purpose and they were.
What, what we're, we're doing a zoning code update right now, currently. And so why don't we, instead of just making single issue, we'll, we'll incorporate that in the zoning code update and we'll bring it to you as a whole, a whole bunch of different.
Can you just add in the containers? Is it okay?
It's already in the zoning code. And so.
Have an in-depth discussion.
Yeah. You're gonna, you're gonna review the whole zoning code. It's coming in front of you. We've got the whole group. We have a, we have a grant, another grant to, to do redo our whole zoning codes. We, it's been since nineteen ninety-five. So it's some time to bring that updated.
So if you used remind, you just flipped in the container issue into the code so we don't miss it?
Well, no, we're gonna talk about it. We, we, there are key issues that, yeah, we're gonna talk about it. Is there key issues that we can, we can address?
Well?
Uh, well, going back, uh, to the access, uh, uh, along River Road and we, we had the issue that there's only one, one way in and one way out. And I think Rick mentioned, there, there is that, uh, access underneath the railroad overpass. Is it off Smith Road there? Or the BNSF utility yard is? I just wondered, I drive underneath that thing quite a bit to go fishing or something. And I, uh, I wonder if there's any way to maybe put a concrete lining just at the, underneath there so you don't have that issue with, you know, that, when it turns, uh, it turns into a mud bog or some, or full of sand. So if an emergency vehicle had to get through there, just a section that gets all sandy that they could get underneath there no matter what and not, or people that have to evacuate in an emergency.
San Bernardino County Transportation is updating their long-term transportation. And we've suggested two projects be included. And in all likelihood, you're looking at funding that might be fifteen years long. One of which is to take the current underpass and make that a real street through there, which means probably going down dealing with the drainage because it's a slow point in the community. But make it a full two-lane road with, uh, access. Because what we've seen is when they, when the underpass is closed, uh, we have problems, traffic flow on Broadway, Needles Highway, Gay Street. Um, the other is we wanna pursue, um, and a bridge over the railroad tracks down that would be part of Smith Road. But what you're talking about is interim until, and what I will do is I will follow up with BNSF about what gymnastics are gonna require us to go through because they're not the, the, the friendliest.
Right.
No, but they're gonna have to make some improvements at some point too, because we're just getting more traffic. I mean, you know, with the RV park down there and just regular traffic, there's.
And candidly, they don't care what our problems are.
Yeah.
They'll say it.
Right.
And I, I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't wanna be critical of the railroad, but their attitude is and if you have a plan properly.
Those are our problems, not their problem.
That's right. So, but there are, while, while, while the region has the books open on what new projects, you know, there's all kinds of trains and whatever that are being planned in, in the urban areas. We need, uh, better access in that.
Somebody somewhere is, they actually, was it Kingman? Someplace they put in a second railroad track access into town. Remember seeing that in the news someplace?
Yeah.
That's someplace close by.
Yeah.
They've been adding additional track all the way out.
But the city did, not the railroad. It was something the city did locally.
I'll check it out.
So.
I just don't remember where I read it.
I would have a question about that. So is the railroad, is there ever any time when they need something from us?
There you go.
For places for parking for their employees. Maybe. No parking.
I am researching. In two thousand and five, council closed the Atgrave Crossing of what is H Street. I, which, uh, on the west side of Dale Barst.
There's some things they were supposed to do.
Right. And that was to build a road off of there that connects over to Swoosh.
It was on the council when that went through. Yeah.
I'm, I'm going digging through those records to find the obligations there because plain acting, then I, I don't.
Go for it.
But, but, yeah, you're right. Because that's what brings its compromises and solutions is when you could come up with something that's funny.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Will?
No, that's it.
I have nothing. You wanna do manager?
It's no secret that, uh, I've given the city council my notice of intent to retire. Uh, I, being ready for the last day is October second. Uh, the council, uh, considered and selected, uh, Patrick to replace me. Effective on the date that I Joyce and I both intend to stay here. This has become our home. With her, you'd have to blast her out of here. But, uh, it was, I've been so honored to been able to serve this community. Uh, but I feel very comfortable that Patrick, uh, will continue what has really just begun. Uh, so I wanted you to know that there's transition underway. Patrick says transition's been for the last five years, but, uh, the council did take an action and unanimously appointed it. So the day will come. Where he's here, not there. And I will be there.
Good for you. Well deserved.
And that's all I, uh.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, we're out of here then. Thank you.
Congratulations, Patrick.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm very excited. Oh, so, uh, the last part of that is, we are recruiting now for a development director to replace.
Right.
And we want a development director that, that gets the
That's what he's doing.
Permitted signing ten and it's not free to use.
All right, we're still recording, so hang up and then.